Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight for this League of Women Voters Forum for the Alameda County Board of Supervisors race. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education, and the advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues that arise in ballot measures. This forum is presented by the Education Arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. It is a joint presentation of the League of Women Voters of Oakland, the League of Women Voters of Alameda, and the League of Women Voters of the Eden area. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under the guidelines set for this forum, which they spoke about and learned about in advance. And just for everyone who is on the call, please turn off your electronic devices because even in the Zoom world, we hear phone chirps and other things that can be disruptive. And note that we do not allow any type of campaign literature, signs, et cetera, so you'll notice that those are not part of these presentations. Tonight's forum is being broadcast live on YouTube, and the session will then be available thereafter on our website and on social media for the community to access more broadly. And links to this will be on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website. We have one forum on our agenda tonight for District 3 Alameda County Supervisors, and there are four candidates for this position. So first, a few ground rules so that everyone who has tuned into the forum knows how we will operate this evening. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening remarks, and the speaking order has been randomly assigned, and we'll begin that shortly. We have timekeepers who will signal the candidates with a digital sign that will appear on your screen when they need to complete their two minutes. Then, we will have one and a half minutes for each of the questions that will be posed to the candidates. For each person to have one and a half minutes for their particular response, and they may use that response time in any way they wish to rebut another candidate, to put forward their position, or whatever they wish. So these questions will be asked of each candidate, but a different person will begin the answers each time, so that will also rotate throughout the evening. At the end of the questions around about after 7:05, we will finish up our last question, and each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement in the reverse order from the opening statements. So now we will begin with the opening statements, and just so that you are all aware, the order for the opening statement will be beginning with Ms. Serlene Grant. Secondly, it will be Mr. David Kakashiwa. Third is Ms. Lena Tam, and fourth is Rebecca Kaplan. I believe we're all ready. Serlene Grant, you may begin.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts and my desires with all of you. My name is Serlene Grant, and I want to be the next county supervisor because I want to make the county better, more responsive to everyone. I want to open up doors, get through the bureaucracy, and have a responsive county. The county serves the people who are most in need, as well as people who... I'm hearing it echo, okay. Serves people who are most in need, as well as everyone else. I mean, we go from providing food services to property tax collection. So I'm running to make sure that those with limited resources and the diverse and socially-economically-challenged residents throughout our county have access to the services that they need. There are two specific things that called me, really, I feel called, to run for this office. One was some affordable housing community in the unincorporated area being served with a foreclosure notice during this time, and we're still trying to work that out. But I don't, you know, the state owns the property, the state served a foreclosure notice on them, and the county had a role in that. And in this day and age, we should not, the county should be fighting for people to stay in their homes, homelessness, such a problem. And then, also, the bureaucracy with the medical care system. Great medical care, not questioning that, but the bureaucracy of how people have been able to interact with their family and their family needs, needs a navigator or slim down or something, there's a problem there. I come to this endeavor bringing you 10 years of service on the San Leandro City Council. I was the first person of color that was elected in the city of San Leandro. I've served as a Wilma Chan appointee to the Oversight Board. I've served the Oversight Board for redevelopment, and I've served for almost 10 years on the Housing Authority Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Mr. Kakashiwa? You're muted? Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for making this space. My name is David Kakashiwa. I'm running for the Alameda County Board of Supervisor seat for District 3. I am running because I believe that Alameda County needs to do much, much better on a couple of issues that I think that are growing and essentially getting worse. The numbers of people that are living on the streets has been growing. Their mortality on the streets is getting worse, and crime and gun violence is also on the rise. I believe the county has a major role to play in reducing the number of homeless and reducing gun violence and the number of people entering into our criminal justice system. I want to play a major leadership role in moving the county to reduce recidivism, reduce homelessness, and to provide greater response time and responsiveness to the folks that are living in our unincorporated areas in District 3. I work as the Executive Director of the East Bay Asian Youth Center. I've been doing this for 42 years and currently doing so. I served 12 years on the Oakland Unified School District's Board of Education, five years as Board President. I authored and co-led community citywide coalitions for the Kids First Initiative and for the Oakland Unified's College and Career Readiness for All Act of 2014. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kakashiwa. Next is Ms. Lena Tam.
Good evening. I am Lena Tam, and thank you for hosting this forum. As a past president of the Alameda League of Women Voters, it's great to see this collaboration in promoting the informed and active participation of our community in their government. I had served on the Alameda City Council as the first Asian woman vice mayor. I'm running for the Alameda County Board of Supervisors, following the tragic passing of Wilma Chan, with a profound sense of responsibility and determination to improve county services for working families and also serve as the bilingual voice for a large and growing immigrant population. I plan to address the issues of housing homelessness, community safety, and healthcare, but especially mental health care access, and bring my lived experience as the daughter of immigrant parents who relied on county bilingual healthcare as your next supervisor. I live and I grew up in Alameda, going through the public school system, graduating from UC Berkeley in environmental engineering. I've worked in Oakland Chinatown for the last 30 years at the East Bay Mud Building, and I have a proven track record of collaboration. As the Vice Mayor of the City of Alameda, I worked to get affordable housing built for our low-income seniors, veterans, and converted an old hotel into workforce housing. I also work with the League to adopt a sunshine ordinance and establish an open government commission to improve transparency and responsiveness. When I was president of the Alameda Healthcare System, governing Alameda Hospital, we partnered with the county to size weekly retrofit the hospital. I chaired the Alameda County Planning Commission and entitled 24 housing units near transit to preserve open space and reduce traffic gridlock. As the Water Resources Manager at East Bay Mud, I developed plans to address climate change and protecting our bay. I would be honored to earn your vote to advocate for the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tam. And next will be Rebecca Kaplan. And before I hand this over to her, I do want to note that the League always asks what pronouns and titles people prefer so that we are cognizant of their preferences, and Rebecca Kaplan did not choose to have a title, so no disrespect is meant when I just say Rebecca rather than a title. So, moving on to Rebecca Kaplan for her opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you so very much for having us here and for putting on this forum. My name is Rebecca Kaplan, and I'm very honored to serve as your Oakland Vice Mayor and City Council Member-at-Large, and prior to that, as the elected at-large Director of AC Transit, where I represented the entire area covered by Alameda County District 3 and beyond. I've also served in regional leadership on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Board, working to bring us zero emission technology to cut pollution and replace heavily polluting trucks and locomotive engines with clean burning facilities and protect our community from asthma and cancer. I'm asking for your vote for Alameda County Supervisor to build a stronger and healthier future for our communities. The county oversees our hospitals, our public health systems, our mental health systems, the ways we protect our environment and protect our communities from disease. And in this moment, when our privacy and liberty are threatened, the county also has an opportunity to step up and protect reproductive freedom and ensure that abortion, contraception, and all reproductive healthcare, as well as community mental health, are made available and safeguarded for all. And I'm calling upon our county to do so, and I commit to doing so, should I have the honor to serve on the County Board of Supervisors. In my public life thus far, I've worked as a state legislative aide, as an attorney handling housing rights cases, and in the city of Oakland have launched important programs for civilian crisis responders, now known as MACRO, that has now received state funding and been replicated by multiple jurisdictions. We need to bring this dedication to our values and the commitment to finding and providing the funding to make those programs a reality. I'd be so honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll begin with the first question, and we will begin with David Kakashiwa's. We'll be taking the first question, and then we'll continue through the group. So, question one. The constituents of Alameda County in this district are extremely diverse. How do you intend to stay connected with all groups and make certain that you have an accurate sense of the needs and concerns of the district? Mr. Kakashiwa?
So, the important thing is for myself, as the county supervisor, to be very active and continuously engaging various constituencies where they are at, in terms of their own meetings, their own convenings, their own gatherings, and being able to listen very respectfully, understand their concerns, look at issues in the field, and being able to continuously engage folks throughout in the geographic areas, in the ethnic and language constituencies, and age populations. So there's a lot of work to be done. I would say that no one person could do that to 100% fidelity, but the main thing is that there is a major effort on my part and on the part of my office to make that a habit and to make that an ongoing practice, that I would hope that all five of us as supervisors are doing that as well. By increasing the level of democratic participation and the transparency of information, that our solutions and our decision-making becomes much, much better and would reduce division and be more broadly embraced by a wider constituency.
Thank you. On to Ms. Lena Tam.
I've had the opportunity to meet with a number of community-based organizations over my years working at East Bay Mud, being on the Board of the Oakland Chinatown Chamber of Commerce, being a part of the League of Women Voters in terms of outreach to a very diverse community that's part of District 3. I think it's important to have bilingual access, especially when you're working with the Oakland Chinatown or the Little Saigon Coalition Groups, and certainly within some of the Spanish-speaking communities. It's harder for communities that have traditionally faced discrimination and structural racism to have their issues considered in the public policy arena, but when individuals from these excluded communities are elected to office, they bring this community knowledge and relationship with them, and I think overall this results in better policies and can build that trust that's very much needed to create that sense of belonging in a very multiracial democracy and looking at a multiple, multi-range of issues that are pervasive throughout the county, whereas parts of the unincorporated care more about certain parts of safety issues and parts of Oakland care more about homelessness because 50% of the homeless population is in the city of Oakland. So trying to create that vitality for our region through outreach is important.
Thank you very much. Rebecca Kaplan?
Thank you so much. In order to be genuinely responsive to the full diverse array of constituencies in our county requires being willing to listen and to recognize the specific needs of each community because the needs are different. For example, the unincorporated areas of Alameda County, the parts that are not in a city, they have a specific situation going on where the county supervisors serve as both their county government and as their city government, deciding their municipal budget. So for the unincorporated area, we should hold separate budget meetings and meetings in the unincorporated areas so that those municipal needs get heard. In addition, many people have trouble accessing government services because of language access, and I will fight to ensure that materials are provided in all the languages of our community and that we hire and recruit and train a staff that will be available to be responsive and culturally competent for our entire community. I also believe that we do best as leaders when we work with community to develop and bring proposals. When I brought the proposal to prohibit OPD from colluding with ICE on deporting immigrants who hadn't committed any crimes, that was something that came from the community and with the community. When we brought the action to allow young people to vote in local school board elections, that was a proposal that came from grassroots community. And when we brought the action to save Head Start, that came from the community, and I will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
When I started this endeavor, I said, okay, I'm going to talk to as many people as I can, I'm going to set up roundtables to have people come in and speak to me. But as I began to listen and meet more and more people in the campaign and see how diverse the interests are and the stakeholders are in this district, I realized that I need to have several different roundtables for different areas of the city, for different of the county, for different issues within the county, and then bring everybody together. And I have the skill set to do that. I was the Director of the Bay Area Center for Collaborative Policy. I was the Bay Area Director, where we brought people together, we worked on the state transportation plan, we worked across government and county boundaries. And in my current role as a community activist and volunteer, I am the co-founder and convener of an organization called Unity in the Community San Leandro, where we bring together different voices and different races of people to explore what we came about because of the racial hatred that was being experienced from 2016 forward. So we bring about groups of people and programming to have these difficult conversations around race, building unity in our community and policy. So I would bring that type of leadership into this space, and leadership is followership. You're only an effective leader if people who you are leading are willing to follow you.
Thank you very much. Our next question, and we'll begin with Lena Tam on this one. There are many issues in this district, in this county, that need attention, and some need substantial funding to reach their objectives. Which programs do you believe are most in need of additional funding, and what are your ideas for more efficiently using public funds in our district? Ms. Tam?
So, half of the county's $3.6 billion budget goes to health and human services. The other part goes to public safety and general government. And so the most important issues, the core safety net issues that the county deals with is in the arena of health and human services. And the one that I see the greatest need for is in mental health facilities, resources in terms of staffing, and also making sure that we have programs that are accessible, particularly as we are coming out of the pandemic. What we're finding is that as children, as the young people come back into the classroom, we're finding issues with anxiety, depression, and we need to have that kind of access more directly. And when you look at what is available, there's a tremendous opportunity for funding under, basically tweaking Proposition 63 funding, also from the governor's budget process. There's $3 billion that's being slated from the budget surplus to address this issue of mental health care and to provide the kind of training and also the kind of staffing that is needed within the county. And some of the issues could be converting some of our hospitals that are slated for closure into mental health care facilities.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan, Rebecca Kaplan, sorry.
Thank you so much. Well, first of all, I think it is important to recognize that we have core needs in the community that are not being met in an effective way. Waiting until someone's mental health situation becomes a crisis and then putting them in jail and only then, under court order, providing mental health services increases human suffering, but it also costs a lot more. And so by investing in prevention, in community-based mental health that is available in the community, by investing in job training programs in the community to train the next generation of healthcare workers and make sure that we'll have the nurses and doctors and in-home support service workers and mental health workers for our community, we can make investments that protect lives and save money. In addition, I would bring to this job my strong track record, landing the money, finding it and getting it for vital programs. We successfully convinced the state of California to invest tens of millions of dollars in our community civilian crisis responder program, known as MACRO, in Oakland. We obtained over $30 million of state investment in our nation-leading zero emission truck program that we launched in partnership with the Port of Oakland, and we successfully initiated the litigation that won tens of millions of dollars from billionaires who were trying not to pay their bond debt and restored that to public support. So that's the other way we grow public services, we bring in the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Yes, if I was looking at the most needed, well, there's lots of needs. So we know just by traveling up and down the street that the most needs are in housing and mental health and medical facilities, and those are funded, those are priority-funded programs, and so I want to keep them as a priority. I want to look at making sure that we are using that money efficiently and what it's supposed to be used for and not wasting it. But the other thing I want to make sure we pay attention to is our capital project and our capital improvements and public facilities budget. That's about 6% of the overall budget, and right now, we have city, I'm sorry, I keep saying city, we have county buildings falling apart. We have county buildings that work inefficiently, we have county buildings that are unhealthy, we have Eastmont Mall that closed for one period of time, the social services department there because of rats and lack of vector control. So we need to make sure that our buildings are safe, that people can come to work in a safe place, and that our community centers are safe, and that our community centers can be used in case of emergency. So we need to put some money and attention to those areas, as well as healthcare, medical centers, and public assistance, social services. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kakashiwa?
So, I think that there's an assumption that homelessness and mental health is a top priority of the county. I'm not so sure. I believe that the first step in figuring out how we best invest and leverage financial resources is to be clear about what the Board's priorities are relative to policy goals that we seek to achieve. If it is about the reduction of homelessness, in order to have a fighting chance in really making that stick, there is a tremendous need for the county to exercise some leadership and some collaboration and cooperation, working with, not only with the state, but in particular with city governments across the county, to be able to align the financial resources and to figure out where the county should more heavily fund around a homeless response versus that of city government. And to be able to do all these kinds of things and bringing down state, federal resources, looking at re-upping the county's A1 bond measure for housing construction, and maybe even looking at the use of a portion, a judicious portion, of the county's budget surplus.
Thank you. We'll go on to the next question, and we'll begin with Rebecca Kaplan. Keeping youth in detention is costly and questionable as far as improving outcomes for these detainees. What are your proposals for providing alternatives to detention for juveniles? Rebecca Kaplan, please.
Well, thank you so much. I'm really appreciating this question because the first legislative debate I ever participated in, in a very significant way at the county, was the debate two decades ago about a proposal to build a super jail for children. And I came to those meetings at the Board of Supervisors, and I opposed that proposal, you know, me and my 100 closest friends. I'm not saying I did this alone. This was a huge grassroots political movement that I was pleased to be a piece of, that mobilized to the County Board of Supervisors and convinced them not to build a super jail for kids. And the struggle against mass incarceration needs to continue, and at the county is where so much of that incarceration takes place. I had the honor to learn with Michelle Alexander, author of The New Jim Crow, and to work for prisoner legal services, and I fully recognize that locking up young people creates more costs, more harm, and more damage down the road. And so we need to invest in more job training program, including specifically paid training opportunities for young people to train up while they're in a job and get some of the growing vacancies that we have in public works and public transit and hospitals and healthcare. We will invest in housing for our young people, including specifically for transition-aged youth, buying dorms and hotels, building modular housing and converting buildings to ensure that everyone has access. Thank you. Sorry, I see the time.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Yes, thank you for this question. We need to be responsive to our young people and our young adults, and housing them in juvenile hall, as the question indicates, is not an answer. We need to give them opportunities and hope and choices and options. And so one of the ways we can do that is work with the County Board of Education, with some of their, I'm going to call them continuing education programs, but they have special programs to track young people into literacy and reading programs, job training programs, job development programs. And so we need to look at what's already existing and make sure that we are diverting people, that we're not working with probation and sheriff's departments to increase the pipeline to prison, but to actually decrease and pull them out of that pipeline again and give them hope. Computer training, there's a big, in my other life, I'm working with people who work in construction and construction training. For years, we have been trying to open up the apprenticeship programs and the training for Black and Brown kids, which are a large part of this population we're talking about, so that they can get job training and placement on some of these construction jobs that would get them out of whatever cycle they're in and give them some hope and opportunity. So I think we need to tie into some of the existing programs, build our workforce, strengthen their computer and financial literacy and their reading literacy so that they know that there are opportunities. strengthen their computer and financial literacy and their 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 reading literacy so that they know that there are opportunities.
Thank you. This uh, Mr. Kakashiwa.
Uh again, this is an area is whether or not the board has a a policy goal about uh having zero incarceration of young people. It's it's again, it's unclear about what is driving uh funding and programmatic uh decisions uh at the county level. So first, uh I think Rebecca did speak to the uh initial proposal to construct uh a super jail for uh for the new juvenile hall. Uh former supervisor Alice Lai Bicker was a swing vote uh where the juvenile hall, the new juvenile hall was significantly downsized. Uh and the number of young people that are incarcerated currently in in the Juvenile Justice Center is significantly less than it was ten years, let alone fifteen years ago. Nevertheless, there is still a population. The uh the the fact of the matter is, is that the probation department and the and the Juvenile Justice Center needs to be clear about, there are plenty of best practices both nationally and locally that have seen the reduction of recidivism in young people and being able to provide uh safe and productive uh community-based supervision. Much of it is right now is funded by the City of Oakland, uh and that work can be replicated and expanded.
Thank you. Ms. Tam.
I I agree with the um other candidates in terms of reducing uh basically the juvenile uh population in in our uh jails and in our prisons. I I think we always have to look for alternatives. One of the things that uh the county has done and could do more of is uh partner with a number of community-based organizations and divert um some of our young people, especially youth between eighteen and twenty-four that um are nonviolent and um provide them with some sort of sanctuary support with programs and services that would advance, you know, their emotional, their educational, their vocational, and their basically their spiritual well-being so that um we can reduce that recidivism. Uh one of the things that we uh looked at is something similar to uh what we call, it's called the Covenant House, and they have uh programs like the Dream Catcher that provide these kind of services uh that includes uh mental health uh access as well as physical health access and to provide them with that connected supportive services. Because um when young people can have access to these type of uh programs, they they flourish and 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 they will not be going back into the system.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Ms. Grant. As a supervisor, you would be responsible for oversight of the spending of billions in funds collected from tax, taxes, bond measures, and other sources. How would you keep citizens informed of your fiscal oversight and the work that you do to spend these resources wisely?
Well, I think that first of all, we just have to have, not just, I mean, that makes it so sound so simple, but there needs to be a reporting mechanism. So if it's as as simple as a newsletter or something that updates people on some of the programs that some of these money is coming uh that's supporting, uh some of the money, like some of the bond money and some of the other measures come with their own oversight committees and there should be a a a frequency of reporting out on what's being done with the money, what's being spent. And it should not be hard to find these reports. That I think, I think at some level, there's transparency for all of these programs. It is just hard to get the information. So it's it's like we're hiding it from people. I think that's what people believe, that we're not making it available to them, and we need to make it available. So I I believe that we could have a a website page. If we're dealing with housing, we can be proactive and send it out to all the stakeholders who deal with housing. If we're dealing with uh some some other uh special uh program, we send it out to the stakeholders and the and the groups that are most uh most attentive to those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kakashiwa.
So I think the um the uh usual work of being able to disseminate uh uh financial information, uh fiscal oversight, it it ends up being a a a big glob of numbers that for your average rank-and-file resident is pretty meaningless. It's it 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 it's it's just numbers. Uh and the, I will continuously go back to policy goals and whether or not the investment of dollars is resulting in real outcomes and real results for a particular policy, whether it's reducing homelessness, the amount of money that's coming to the county for uh homeless services, homeless housing. What are the results of that? I think that that's what your average taxpayer is looking for, is real results. So if we can structure our uh bureaucracy to be able to report in that manner, it's very difficult to do so because I think governments are not used to doing it that way. Uh but I think that that would be a big step forward for both the public, but it's also would be a major tool for the for the board uh to to be able to make uh policy and budget decisions.
Sorry, I got muted there. Uh, thank you. And Ms. Tam, you're next.
So the budget process basically communicates the county's budget priorities and also our policies with respect to uh what we want to see funded. And it's it it's unfortunate that when we have budget hearings, it's the groups and the organizations that are in danger of having their budgets cut that come to these meetings. So I think it's important to have uh be ahead of the game in terms of making sure that uh I would like conduct um not only newsletters but have town hall meetings and then uh because I I essentially will be the city council person or the mayor of the San Lorenzo area that's in the district, uh have special budget meetings that deal particularly with the unincorporated areas because you're gonna have to address their issues on but uh public safety, public works, land use. And having those kind of uh forums will be very important. And I think uh the league is very familiar with um each of the oversight measures on the bonds because they've done pros and cons on the bond measures and they've also participated on the oversight. And that has its own uh special mechanism, but it has to be uh in a way that people can understand because sometimes uh there are rules and regulations that govern the amount of funds that are put put in reserve that are not well communicated.
Thank you. Rebecca Kaplan.
Thank you. The county controls billions of dollars and vast amount of resources, both budgetarily and even beyond the budget. That includes that there are ballot measures that have already passed but not yet been implemented, that it represent funding that can be used to house the homeless, to expand childcare. We should have childcare available for every person who needs it. And I will take action to provide community-based budget hearings that are held not only at the county building but in other easily accessible public locations and at hours of the day that are more easily accessible to the community. I will also work to strengthen the online access as well, as well as the access for those who are not on the computer. In terms of real estate, which is a huge asset the county owns, that is rarely given the attention it deserves, I will work to ensure that the county abide by the Surplus Lands Act, which is a California law to help ensure that public lands are used for public good and that they are publicly posted and prioritized for affordable housing when they're being made available. The county also takes hundreds of homes every year and sells them through the county tax auction process. And that process too should have a public notification process where those properties are prioritized for existing tenants and affordable housing before going out to investor bidders. And so I would work to increase transparency on all the county's resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is about Highland Hospital, and we'll begin with Mr. Kakashiwa. Highland Hospital is the trauma center for our region. What improvements do you think may be needed at Highland Hospital? And do you see their financial status as being secure for the community's needs? Mr. Kakashiwa.
Um, so my sense of uh Highland Hospital in terms of what's needed uh is more bodies, uh staffing uh and the uh and the conditions in which the the doctors and uh all the professional staff and the emergency room uh are working with. Uh I think there's a the need to buttress uh that infrastructure, uh the staffing infrastructure for Highland Hospital. Uh and that the uh as far as the finance, so you're asking about the financial stability uh of that, that's uh uh an ongoing uh challenge and struggle for the uh Alameda Health Systems for not only Highland Hospital for but for all the other uh community hospitals and the wellness centers that uh uh money is a real issue uh because the need is growing and the uh uh staffing ratios uh need to be augmented. Uh and the uh e- even with a uh hundred and fifty million dollar Missouri uh sales tax, uh there are still uh uh financial needs for our uh healthcare system. Um, and so I do not have a quick fix uh uh on that, uh but I do think uh a greater uh scrutiny and public accountability uh around how we are resourcing uh our uh health system uh is is an on is in order on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Ms. Tam.
Having served on the Alameda Healthcare District Board of Directors that governed Alameda Hospital, which is now affiliated with the county, running hospitals and making sure that they uh stay solvent has been a constant challenge uh because of the ever-increasing requirements when it comes to uh uh meeting regulations, meeting staffing ratios. So uh that's gonna be an ongoing issue. I think the um the criticality of of uh having Highland um because it is a renowned trauma center in the region is going to be critical when we look at um having adequate staffing because we're finding as we get out of the pandemic, there's there's staffing shortages. There's uh different kinds of uh specialties that we don't have, that we need to have. And also, when we look at uh the reimbursement rates from the insurance companies and having those negotiations, that is something that the uh the reforms that are going through the Alameda Healthcare System Board of Trustees will be taking on, and that group has just basically uh moved into a transition because their prior Board of Trustees was uh was changed over uh under the late supervisor Wilma Chan. And we have representation from each of the groups that can provide sound information for us.
Thank you, Rebecca Kaplan.
Thank you so much. Highland Hospital is absolutely essential to the health of our entire region. It is our certified Level One Trauma Center, and we must make sure to protect all that is needed to keep that standard going. Highland Hospital is also the region's largest teaching hospital. And so it is also essential as a resource to train and uplift that next generation of healthcare workers as we face critical shortages. We need to make sure to be funding adequate maintenance for the building and upkeep and ensure adequate staffing, both for the medical staff and for the non-medical staff. A hospital without enough janitors is a public health threat too. So we need to make sure to keep it fully staffed at every level of positions. They also need adequate things like showers and staff space to be able to continue to attract and retain their staff and keep them healthy. And adequate lighting and good ventilation, state-of-the-art ventilation to help prevent the spread of disease and quality lighting. But one of the other things that might seem contradictory, but that is actually really important to keeping Highland Hospital functioning well, is making absolutely sure that we keep our other hospitals open and that we fully fund our other hospitals and do not let them close and in fact, increase the resource and the levels of support available at them to prevent Highland from being overrun. And that's how we can have a comprehensive system to protect our health. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the the question? I wanna hear it in its entirety.
Highland Hospital is the trauma center for our region. What areas, in what areas do you believe that Highland Hospital made any improvements? And is their financial status secure to make meet those requirements?
Thank you. So I've, uh as my colleagues have said here, the the financial status of the hospital is a challenge to to keep it well-funded, but I think that it is a priority to keep it well-funded and it and we will keep it well-funded and operating because of its uh central role uh in this whole system, the Bay Area system. Um I've worked with other hospitals as clients and in the area, and I know that those other hospitals pay into a fund to help keep Highland as its trauma center and everything else functioning. And so there are ways to keep this, you know, if if we're at a shortfall, there are ways to get additional money to keep it going. But I don't think we will be at a shortfall for Highland. But like uh my colleague said, we have to make sure we can keep the others that feed into it and and take some of the burden off of it running. The other big problem I, well, problem or something that needs to be looked at, especially as we're dealing with coming out of the pandemic, as we went into the pandemic and came out of the pandemic, is training supplies and staffing. We have to make sure there's enough of that. We need to make sure that our workers are are working in healthy workspaces, that they get the rest of the care that they need so they can come back and take care of the community. We need to make sure that the supplies are there. We need to make sure that our emergency room is staffed and can go because it is a trauma one center. It is highly regarded emergency center. Uh so uh I think it's a priority and I think it will be there.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Ms. Tam. Supervisor Wilma Chan was a huge champion of early childhood care and early child education. How do you plan? I'm sorry, it just switched off there for a moment. So Supervisor Chan was a huge champion of early childcare and early education. How do you plan to support our youngest learners and their families if you were to be elected? Ms. Tam.
So Supervisor Wilma Chan was definitely my role model uh and inspiration when it comes to um providing healthcare access, uh prevention, and um and the first five program uh in 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 our city and in our region. Uh I definitely want to continue her legacy because her vision is to uh get thing, get ahead of issues. Like she was the one that felt we needed to have a new war on poverty to remove barriers to prevent uh yeah, our young people and families from um from from having the the issue, having equity basically and access to the resources that are necessary so that um so that our young people and our kids can actually have a thriving opportunity to succeed when they move into our school system. And she started with programs like the All-In Eats, and then it it morphed into a a broader program that brings in collaborations across all sectors within our community that focus on basic needs in the county and also making sure that they have shelter, food, healthcare, and safety, uh making sure the families are involved and that they have access to uh self-sufficiency programs that provide for uh for financial support, making sure that um there is a quality education that provides positions for the next generation with academic and economic success.
Thank you. Rebecca Kaplan.
Yes, I believe we need to commit to working toward universal access to childcare, that every person who needs childcare should be able to get it. When people talk about the difficulty finding workers and the challenge for jobs and the challenge for people coming out of the pandemic, it is disproportionately impacting women and parents who can't take a job if they can't find childcare. That is why I fought so hard, successfully by the way, in Oakland to save the Head Start Centers that were proposed for closure. We intervened to find the money. We called a special emergency council meeting and we allocated those resources to stop the proposed closures of the Head Start Centers in Oakland, and we need to go beyond that. There are ballot measures. There are ballot measures that have already passed at the city and the county level, but which have not yet been implemented, which we can use as well as fund surpluses in multiple sources. And I would work to open new Head Start Centers throughout our community so that they are available in every neighborhood. They help parents, they help communities, and they help the long-term future of the kids. In fact, Oakland Chinatown needs another Head Start Center and we should open a new Head Start Center in Wilma Chan Park, which we renamed this week. Council President Nikki Bass, Sheng Tao and I renamed the former park is now Wilma Chan Park in Oakland Chinatown. We also need to invest to expand home-based childcare, which can be in every neighborhood and provide business opportunity to people who do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Okay, go ahead.
Thanks to Wilma Chan's championship and her marshalling through on some of these issues and causes, we we have noteworthy childcare programs in Alameda County. We could have more, of course. But one of the ways we have to take care of our children is to take care of the families. And so we also have to look at the other programs that are being offered. We have to look at the nutrition programs, one of which is she's very well known for is All In. But we need to look at our nutrition programs, our mental health programs. I've said this before, as we come out of the pandemic, we don't know how to be with each other. So how do we be with, you know, how are we in our family situations? And our, how are our children reacting when they haven't been able, well, the early childhood, they've been in childcare and at home, but in schools, they haven't been able to go to school. So so we have to look holistically at the program. We can't just look at, is there childcare for ages, you know, three to five? We need to look at what's happening with the whole family and bolster up all those programs. When you have the budget question earlier, we talked about, or I mentioned how much is going to social services. So we need to keep all those things going and make sure we have strong families, strong parenting, that we look after our teens who are going through trauma because they come home to their brothers and sisters. So all of that, mental health, social health, social welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kakashi.
Once again, I'll go back to a board policy goal. So Rebecca Kaplan just stated a personal aspiration about universal access to childcare. Any on demand, anybody wants it and needs it is going to get it. I I think that the board would do well to clarify what its policy goal is relative to early care and and early childhood education. Having said that, there are two major pots of money that are still getting some legal clarification of whether or not they are legally valid measures that are passed. That's Measure C on the county for early care. It's about, again, about another hundred and fifty million dollars county-wide investment. And then in the city of Oakland, there's Measure AA, which is about thirty million dollars a year. This provides a, it's a tremendous amount of money. Not, it's a, it's a very significant amount of money to really expand access. But the field is very complicated. It's very Byzantine from home-based. There's home-based care, there is informal care, there are family playgroups, there's preschool and other forms of childcare. There's not one system that you can impact. And so my time is up. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Next question will begin with Rebecca Kaplan. Many of the communities in District Three are experiencing extreme hardship with a number of unsheltered people. What do you see as the Board of Supervisors' role in reducing homelessness in our community?
Please go ahead. Thank you so much. The Board of Supervisors needs to take a significant leadership role in dealing with homelessness throughout our communities, and I would commit to several specific steps. One, to engage in a joint collaborative between the county and the cities. Most importantly, but not only the city of Oakland, where so much of the homelessness takes place. We have to acknowledge that the majority of the funding for homeless services from the state flows through the county. And so the lack of coordination between the county and the cities is a major impediment. We also need to be willing to look at what has worked and invest in expanding that. In Oakland, I fought for us to buy dorms and hotels so that we could have comprehensive navigation centers where the homeless could get off the streets immediately into real rooms with real doors and real windows and real plumbing. And also have them in buildings that have other rooms where there can be support services and staff on site to help people with other supports that they may need. We're doing this with great success at the Lake Merritt Lodge and other facilities, but the county controls most of the funds and we need to invest in expanding this effort. We've identified some hotels on the MacArthur Corridor and other dorms we could buy to house the homeless, and I would ensure that the county does so. I would also work to use tax auction properties, which the county has not historically prioritized for affordable housing and use public land for public good to prioritize building affordable housing in public efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
We talk about the homeless issue because it stares us in the face when we travel throughout the county and we see people on the streets that are homeless. And some of those people are mentally ill. We we've established that and need treatment. Some of them are on the streets because they were three months in arrears on closing out their rent. They maybe were two hundred or three hundred dollars short three or four times in a row and got evicted pre-COVID. So I think that one of the things we need to look at is keeping people in their homes, keeping regular families in their homes. And if that's, they need two hundred dollars a month to close that gap, that we need to look at some kind of program that would keep them in their homes so that we don't have to pay for it on the other end when they're out of their homes. Also, we need to look at affordable housing policies that apply across the board. I recently helped a senior citizen find housing in a care facility that was funded by public dollars and it carried an affordable housing requirement so that his his living cost, his rent, if you will, was was reduced by, I don't know, some small percentage. Again, a way to keep people housed. So then while we're managing and seeking solutions for the greater housing crisis, we have to pay attention to those of us who are already in housing and what's going to happen when the moratorium is lifted, when when the prices of everything are going up, so forth and out of time. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kakashi. You're muted.
So just just a slight piggyback on what Serlene Grant had just raised. So in terms of on the prevention side, the the county, first of all, I think the Board of Supervisors should recognize that we are, the county is in a state of emergency relative to the unhoused population. The numbers are growing and a lot of tragic things occur as a result. And the the county board needs to understand its role as a form of government vis-à-vis state and 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 city. And for that matter, school districts and 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 other entities also need to play in this arena. The county, though, does have to have a comprehensive approach. One is around, if to Serlene Grant's notion that people are struggling day by day, paycheck to paycheck and an extra universal basic income, an extra five hundred dollars a month over a twelve to eighteen month period would be a lifeline for folks and helping them, keep them in their homes. That's that's an important strategy. Expanding our affordable housing stock is absolutely critical. The article in the Chronicle about Wood Street and how we cannot find places for three hundred people that are living there, assuming the article is accurate, that is a case study of 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 a failure on the part of the city and the county and the state.
And Ms. Tam.
I share the priority that the county has and the state in addressing homelessness. Clearly, there are three major causes that we've already talked about, whether it's adequacy of affordable housing, whether it's financial security, whether it's substance abuse and mental health care. The county has a direct role in several of these areas in addition to basically allocating funding to the cities that are most affected, like the city of Oakland. So to address the homeless issue, it's going to require a continuum of care that includes wraparound services that looks at more than just temporary housing, but getting them to a point where they're financially stable, whether they need education, transportation, rental assistance before moving into a permanent housing. And there are community-based organizations and navigation centers and community impact hubs that do that now. We need more of them and there will be funding to to start moving in that direction. But with respect to providing housing, the the biggest challenge is often the cost of the land. And the county assessor's office and Rebecca Kaplan has identified several opportunities where there is a there's some mechanisms in which we can convert these lands into housing. My time's up, sorry.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Ms. Grant. Some constituents have raised questions about the actions taken or not taken by the county registrar of voters. What would you do to increase transparency of the registrar of voters? Oh, you're being muted, I'm sorry.
By the actions taken or not taken. So I'm not really clear what you're asking in that question. But the transparent registrar of voters there, are you going to offer clarity?
Um, the question that was, actually, can you, yeah, we paused the time. The question that was submitted from the audience made several assertions that we don't know if those are actually correct or not. So leaving this as a broader question, I I can't go into those details at this point.
Okay, so the question is, and I guess I'm back on the clock.
I'll I'll repeat the question as as since we've talked in between. What, because some people have questions about actions that the registrar of voters has taken or not taken. What would you do to ensure transparency of the office of the registrar of voters?
Right. The registrar of voters is one of those offices in the county, kind of like the tax collector and a few others. We know they're there, but we don't really focus on them unless it it impacts us. So the registrar of voters, you know, they have a website that we can come to to see who's who's registered, who's voting, what the vote tallies are on election night. But but we don't get a lot of information out from them except during the campaign season, I guess. So maybe the question is looking for better ways to get the information and more transparency on how, what happens on election night and more transparency on how decisions are made. And I guess the best way I can offer that, because so much of what they're doing is having gone through this process, so much of what they're doing is very minute to following code and law that I I just believe that once we get the information, they just need to issue reports on it. Bring it to city councils and to city government halls, bring it out, release the information out. Don't make us have to come and get it.
Mr. Kakashi.
So I'll just say that without understanding the context of what the issues are with the county registrar, I I don't really have, I'll just say, I don't have much to say to the question. I'd like to understand a little bit more context to be able to respond in a meaningful way.
Understood. Ms. Tam.
I am going to assume that this refers to issues that were raised in a letter that was sent to the the Board of Supervisors with a coalition of voting rights advocates that included like the Asian Law Caucus and the ACLU. Basically, the county registrar of voters were cited for failure to provide access to ballot information, for example, for non-English speakers. They didn't have ballot drop boxes in the adequate locations. Poll workers were not trained properly and this basically compromised the ability of like, you know, a couple hundred people to exercise their right to vote. And clearly, the county provides budgeting for the registrar of voters and we need to make sure that there are adequate resources to correct these failures and these deficiencies. And and that is something that I would support as a supervisor.
Thank you, Rebecca Kaplan.
Yes, there have been significant problems in terms of public access to needed information from the Alameda County Registrar of Voters. That includes precinct level data, maps, even to to the other candidates, call them up and ask for the one-page map of Alameda County Supervisor District Three and they won't, there isn't one. That that's very unusual. Most counties would would have that at this point. And there's been other complaints from other parties who've been trying to get updated data who have not received what would be normal and what many counties would have available online. It is not an independently elected position, so I do believe as county supervisors, it would be our responsibility to make sure that what needs to be online is put online, that what needs to be made available to the public is made available. And that that is something I absolutely would commit to and and work on. Of course, I'm not currently in county government, but I can speak to some of the similar issues I've dealt with outside of it. While on the Board of AC Transit, I helped bring around a voter registration bus that brought voter registration information, personnel and materials to many areas, including many underserved areas to support voter registration. In my role on the Coliseum Authority Board, I helped open the Oakland Coliseum site as a large-scale safe distancing voting site during COVID. And if I were on the county board, I would work to fix the problems at the registrars. Thank you.
Thank you. And then this next question will begin with Mr. Kakashi. Please share your budget priorities for Alameda County. Where do you see the most influential investments to enhance the quality of life for all residents?
My top priority is reducing homelessness and reducing recidivism. And I believe things, they go hand in hand. And I will be advocating for an approach, a theory of change and a strategy and a plan for how the county's role, what the county's role is in reducing homelessness by at least fifty percent in terms of people living on the streets. And what we are doing about reducing the reentry of folks that are on probation or who are currently incarcerated at Santa Rita that are reentering our criminal justice system. A revolving door is a waste of taxpayer money and I believe a front-end investment around transitional employment and mental health services will be very helpful in reducing recidivism and reentry into our criminal justice system.
Thank you, Ms. Tam.
The three priority areas that I want to work on, which is dealing with housing homelessness, community safety and mental health care access, all have a a direct effect on the quality of life in the county. And these are issues that are a top priority for a lot of the other supervisors as well and for a lot of the cities. So I think there's a tremendous opportunity to secure funding to make sure that the county and the cities in the county get their fair share and to address these issues head-on. There's a unique opportunity coming out of the pandemic with this kind of funding support. And that is something that I will work with all the cities and the other supervisors to aggressively pursue and making sure that we get community-based organizations, the funding that they need to provide the wraparound services that are necessary to address the homeless issue and to make sure that we don't have basically people going back into basically a a people going back into a homeless situation, having access to mental health care facilities and personnel, because we know that John George is beyond capacity and we should not be moving into a crisis intervention every time we have a mental health situation.
Thank you. Rebecca Kaplan.
Yes, I think it's important to think about budget investments in terms of how they can benefit communities for years to come. And so, for example, that's part of why it's so important to invest in job training, including job training for mental health workers and for healthcare workers of all kinds that we have a threatened shortage of. And by investing in that job training, we can also help people who need jobs get jobs and improve their lives. That's also why it's essential to invest in affordable housing and housing the homeless, including by buying dorms and hotels for immediate use. Somebody has their sound on. Including buying dorms and hotels for immediate use while also building more housing on public land. It also means investing more in the preventative aspects of healthcare. If we wait till people get sick and show up in the emergency room, it's more costly, both in terms of dollars and in terms of human suffering. So I would work to expand community clinics, to expand prevention, to have vaccination readily available on a regular basis in safe outdoor locations, both for COVID boosters, for flu vaccines, for shingles vaccines and other aspects of disease prevention. I would work to make sure we're intervening in the opioid epidemic and helping people get access to treatment and get needles out of our parks and off of our streets. I would also recognize illegal dumping as an environmental health hazard and bring county resources to bear to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last question for this evening. And so now.
Sorry, I didn't answer that question.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Ms. Grant.
I know. I want to, I want to, very, I want to go home too.
No, I just, I was busy unmuting myself and my apologies. Please go.
Okay, so my my top budget priorities, as I said here in this morning and in this moment, would be housing, as I've already talked about, something to make sure that we are keeping people housed as well as answering to the housing crisis. And public safety from the environment and county point of view, to make sure our buildings and and our surroundings are are are, I want the county to be a hallmark. I want us to be the showcase. We're in this wonderful center of technology. We should have smart buildings and efficient buildings and renewable energy using our buildings and so that while we're putting some investment in on the front end, we're making savings on the back end of that, as well as having safe and clean places for our employees to work. And then finally, public safety, again, for public safety in regards to the mental health treatment programs and mental health not being a criminal, being a crime and just working that thing out so that we can have responses to mental health crises that do not wind up putting people in jail. Jail should not be the answer to an overcrowded John George facility. So those would be my three broad areas of focus. Thank you.
Thank you. It appears that we have time for one more question, so we will do one last question and then go to our closing statements. This question has to do with infrastructure and the President Biden's infrastructure bill, which passed earlier. Alameda County is entitled to apparently about $6 billion of infrastructure money based on population. Where do you see the priorities for this infrastructure funding to be spent? And we will begin with Rebecca Kaplan.
Thank you very much. Alameda County needs very significant investment in our public infrastructure, and that's for several reasons. One, we have a real problem in terms of bicycle and pedestrian safety. Too many bicyclists and pedestrians are injured and there aren't enough safe crossings. So we need a countywide investment in safer crosswalks, safer bike lanes so that people can walk and bike securely without being put in danger by cars. Another issue that is particularly important in Alameda County is the movement of freight. Alameda County houses most of the truck traffic for the entire Northern California mega region. They all depend on our port and our warehouses to feed them. But our communities suffer from the air pollution and traffic congestion that results. And that's part of why another really important investment is to reduce that air pollution by investing in zero emission clean trucks and by helping more of the freight move by rail. When freight moves by rail, it emits less than when it moves by truck. So cleaner trucks when we need trucks and more of it by rail. That also means we need to provide safe crossings for those rail crossings that go throughout all of Alameda County has these rail lines and people are often put in danger or difficulty crossing the tracks. Finally, something specific to County Supervisor District Three, we need a safe bicycle and pedestrian crossing across the estuary to unite the district and connect Oakland and Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grant.
I think I think the biggest need that I know of right now, without having researched it, kind of picks up on Rebecca's Kaplan's last point, and that is the bridges and the crossings to get back and forth from Alameda to Oakland or to San Leandro. I happen to be working in the Department of Public Works Public Works Agency at the time that one of the bridges in Alameda about four years ago kind of had some wear and tear, right? Right as you were getting ready to cross it and they had the emergency closure for a day or so. So those bridges are important, as well as a lot of the infrastructure on our heavily traveled roads. Throughout the cities, there would probably be a need to do some kind of equity analysis on getting some of our major roads that connect us better in better condition. So I see that infrastructure going through roads and bridges primarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kakushiba.
So I'm not fully aware of the the eligibility eligible uses for the federal infrastructure dollars. But assuming that it's broader than transportation, I I think that the seismic retrofitting of our the county's hospital system and and those buildings is critical. I think being able to utilize, if it's eligible, to utilize county infrastructure dollars to serve as a match to local school bond measures for high priority health and safety renovations and rebuilds of schools throughout the county. I think those kinds of uses are are very important. In addition to the transportation issues, which I would imagine that the County Transportation Commission and other regional bodies already have a waitlist of projects. And and so that would need to be balanced. But to the extent that it can go for other types of infrastructure needs, including housing, is something that I would like to take a hard look at.
Thank you. And Ms. Tam.
Uh, one of the first priority projects would be make getting the Broadway Jackson interchange between Alameda and Oakland to become a reality because it's supposed to address an environmental justice issue when it comes to pedestrian safety and also to include funding for a new bike and pedestrian bridge between our two cities because that could reduce 45,000 vehicle miles traveled and the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that go with it. We also need to address the supply chain issues with the movement of goods that we're finding to be one of the inflationary pressures that we're seeing. I work for a water district, so having infrastructure funding to deal with our our aging pipes and and our sewer system is really important because we we had a major collapse of the interceptor over at the Oakland Coliseum. Near and dear to me is the seismic retrofit of the hospitals, particularly Alameda Hospital and also in terms of hydrants, moving the county into a position where we could acquire a a hospital that is slated for closure and turning that into a mental health care facility that is very much needed, like the Alta Bates Hospital that is owned by Sutter at the moment.
Thank you. And thank you to all the candidates for your answers to these questions. We'll now go to closing statements and we'll do this in the reverse order of the opening statements. So the first to do a closing statement will be Rebecca Kaplan. Please go ahead. You'll have, each have one minute.
Thank you so much to the League and to everyone who participated. It's an honor to be with you. My name is Rebecca Kaplan and again, I ask for the honor of your vote. We can build a stronger and healthier future. The county government oversees public health and environmental health. And we can use that more broadly. We need to open healthy food hubs in every community throughout the county to provide job opportunity in the food sector and easy access to all of our communities for healthy food. I want to build on the work we've done, where we wrote and passed a tax on sugar sweetened beverages and then use that money to fund a healthy corner store conversion program to provide access to healthy food to communities in need. We can clean up the illegal dumping, get the needles off the street, house the homeless using things that we know work. I'm honored to be endorsed by the Democratic Party, the Wellstone Democratic Renewal Club, our nurses, our firefighters and many more. My website is supervisorkaplan.org. I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tam.
Thank you to the League for hosting this forum. I want to work with you to be your voice on the Board of Supervisors. I bring the depth and the breadth of experience and leadership skills to the board, having served on the Alameda City Council, been president of the Alameda Healthcare District Board and chaired the Alameda County Planning Commission. I continue to be active in the community, serving on the AAW Board that help mentor young women in STEM promoting open space and healthy communities through parks with the Foundation Board, serving on the Alameda Hospital Foundation and advocating for projects like pedestrian safety, housing and condemning hate crimes. I want to work with you to elevate the legacy of the late Wilma Chan to new heights and improving access to county safety net service. I'm honored to have the support of community leaders like Controller Benny Yee, Treasurer Fiona Ma, Supervisor Dave Brown, former Supervisor Alice Lightbicker, County Assessor Fong Law, Mayor's Marilyn Ashcraft and Libby Schaaf, and over 60 leaders listed at lenatam.com. I'd be honored for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Kakushiba.
Again, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I just want to leave folks with you know, I'll just simply share my own personal perspective. I I believe that there are the quality of life in our communities, I believe, has been downgraded a bit. And I think that the issues of homelessness, crime and violence have gotten worse over the last few years. And I think we need to have a county supervisor and county government that's going to take this very seriously. And that's going to be rooted in the lives and the neighborhoods of the people most impacted by county services and systems. And I think we need to do a lot better. And so that is my intent and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Grant.
Thank you all for the opportunity and for organizing this forum this evening. I am running, as I said, to to make access and not get rid of the bureaucracy that is impacting so many lives. I'm a policymaker who's been working at the forefront of equity before equity became the fuzword of the day. I've been bringing people to the collective tables to come up with collaborative policy for the for the past 20 years or so. I'm different than others in that my everyday work is in the intersection of environment, community development, equity experiences and environmental justice. And I also have experience in crisis communications and crisis response, which is the period of life we're in right now and how to respond to getting out of this crisis. So I bring the endorsement of two out of the three mayors of the two of the three cities and a number of community groups, community representatives, environmental groups and people, and I hope for your support come June 7.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Alameda, Eden Area and Oakland, I want to thank all of the candidates running for this office for their participation this evening. I also want to thank those who attended in the audience to come to encounter the candidates online and propose thoughtful questions. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates' ballot measures, please visit the League's award-winning and easy-to-use website, lvwOakland.org or votersedge.org/CA, which is also in the chat at this moment. There you'll find information about the candidates' ballot measures and links to other sources of information about the upcoming election. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you'd like to be involved with the men and the women, helping to make democracy work, it's easy to join the League in your area. We encourage you to visit the website of Oakland, Alameda or Eden Area and go to our Facebook or Twitter accounts to provide, to get more information. Votersedgeagain.org/CA is the place to go for more information about this particular election. The deadline to register to vote is May 23. If you've moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation, since you last registered, you can do that by re-registering by election day. Online voter registration is also available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Ballots were mailed today to all registered voters. Remember to vote by mail or at the polls on June 7. And please encourage your family, friends and neighbors to vote. Thank you for attending this evening's forum. Good evening.
Thank you.